Hi, I think we're ready if you are.
We are ready.
Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order tonight's planning commission in the city of Emoryville. I'm calling to order the regular planning commission meeting for July 22nd, 2021, and at 6:30. I would like to state the record. At this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided by the, under the governor's executive order in response to COVID-19 state of emergency. During a public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting. That may be livestreamed on... livestreamed online and on ETV Channel 27. And provide comments by submitting a... and provides comment by submitting an online comment form which will be read into record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to this, our city, our main city of Emoryville website, www.Emoryville.org, and navigating through the planning commission page. Once there, you'll see a link entitled "Submit an Online Speaker Card." The public can also have an option to, in participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you like, if you're calling in, press *9. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the post again, and there'll be a link on the planning commission agenda page as well. Roll call. Mr. Bryant, would you, Community Developer Director Charlie Bryant, will you take roll call?
Certainly, thank you. Commissioner Chafe?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Commissioner Mendez?
Here.
Commissioner Simons?
Here.
Commissioner Zepko is absent. And Vice Chair Young?
Here.
So we have quorum of five commissioners present.
Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make a comment related to the items not on the agenda should begin submittal their online, should have begun submittal of their online speaker card. Three minutes will be allotted.
Vice Chair Tieda Young? Please skip number three of the election.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't have the election notes in front of me. One second, please. Ms., uh, Mr. Bryant, would you please, uh, help me with the election?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Uh, this is the time for the annual election of officers of the commission, namely the chair and the vice chair, to serve for the next, uh, the next year. So at this time, it would be appropriate to request a nomination from the commission for a chair and a vice chair for the coming year. I see Commissioner Chafe's hand is raised.
I'd like to make a motion to elect the chair and the vice chair together as a single motion. Um, and in addition, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Stephen Keller as chair of the committee and Commissioner Eric Mendez as vice chair of the committee.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'd like to second that motion.
And are there any other nominations? Seeing none, Vice Chair Young, at this time, it would be appropriate to ask for a roll call.
Or any discussion.
Or any discussion, thank you, Kristi.
Is, is there any discussion from the group in regards to the selections that have been made? Let's take roll call?
Right. On the motion by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Commissioner Simons to elect Commissioner Keller as chair and Commissioner Mendez as vice chair. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
Commissioner Zepko is absent. And Vice Chair Young. So at this point, it would be appropriate to turn the running of the meeting over to the new chair. Commissioner Keller.
All righty. Then it will be time for me to thank you very much for having this situation where I could help the city of Emoryville for the period of time that I did. I'll pass the gavel over to Stephen Keller.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young, appreciate it and appreciate your service. So we'll move the meeting on to the public comment. And Charlie, I don't have the script, so could you read the public comment script for us, please? Certainly, thank you, Chair Keller. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda should have begun submittal of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk, or in this case, the planning commission secretary, to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen, or if you're calling in, press *9, and the secretary will call on you at the appropriate time. This time, I will ask myself whether any comments have been received via the online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hands to make audio comments. And if you'll bear with me for a quick second, I will check my email. And I do not see any online comment cards. I also do not see any raised hands among the attendees. Give it, uh, maybe one more minute or so. Still no comment cards. No raised hands. Okay, seeing, that's okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. So we'd like to approve the action minutes of, first of all, the special meeting of June 17th, 2021. Are there any corrections, or can I have the motion to accept? There are no corrections, as I need a commissioner to make a motion and second all those.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Mendez, seconded, excuse me, Vice Chair Mendez, seconded by Commissioner Chafe. Oh, I have to reorder this, let's see. Okay, Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Zepko is absent. Vice Chair Mendez?
Aye.
And Chair Keller?
Aye.
The minutes are approved, thank you. Thank you, and moving on to 5.2, the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of June 24th. Can I have corrections or an motion, please?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it, I guess.
None.
All right, moved by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Chair Keller on approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 24th, 2021. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Simons?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Zepko is absent. Vice Chair Mendez?
Aye.
And Chair Keller?
Aye.
Six ayes, the, I'm sorry, five ayes, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll move on to the Community Development Director's report. Mr. Bryant, if we could have your report, please? Thank you, Chair Keller. The city council has held two meetings since your last meeting, and those were on July 6th and July 20th. On July 6th, they held a study session on the proposal to demolish two residential units and replace them with two new units at 127064th Street, and they had a number of comments. The planning commission, as you may recall, previously held a study session on this project at your May 27th meeting, and the project is tentatively scheduled to come back to the commission for a public hearing on September 23rd. The council approved the first reading of an ordinance amending the planning regulations to prohibit crematories in Emoryville. As the commission will recall, you recommended approval of this amendment at your May 27th meeting. Second reading of the ordinance was passed on July 20th, and it will take effect on August 19th. And then concerning the Art Center, when the planning director's report was given of, actually taken by the planning commission at your June 24th meeting, it was reported that the commission had unanimously denied the proposed modifications to the Art Center project. The council then voted to appeal this decision to themselves, and this appeal will be considered by the city council in the coming months. On July 20th, the council considered planning commission appointments. They interviewed candidates for the two openings on the commission, and they appointed Al Dram and Jack Kizony to three-year terms. These, their appointments are effective on August 1st, so their first planning commission meeting will be on August 26th, at which time they will be sworn in by the city clerk. The council held a study session on Wareham's proposal to earn development bonus points for the Emery Station Overland Project via the flexible community benefit by converting some of the live-work units in the adjacent Hollow Street building into below-market rate of the MR unit. As the commission knows, if this proposal is accepted by the council, then the entire project will require city council approval. But if it is not, then the project approval will be considered by the planning commission and would be appealable to the council. The council had a lengthy and detailed discussion about the various factors involved in converting these units into BMRs, but they did not reach a final conclusion about whether or not to agree to entertain Wareham's proposal. Therefore, a second city council study session on a more detailed proposal that will be developed in the interim will be scheduled in the future. The council amended its calendar of regular meetings to eliminate the August 31st and September 21st meetings, and to add a new meeting on Monday, September 13th, starting at 5:30 PM. Since the council normally does not meet in August, this means that the next regular council meeting will be on September 13th, followed by one on October 5th. The council passed the first reading of a so-called REACH code ordinance, amending the building regulations to require new residential buildings to be all-electric, and to install solar panels in the so-called solar zone of the roof of buildings up to 10 stories. This ordinance is scheduled to come back to the council for second reading on September 13th. And finally, the council heard a presentation and approved the conceptual design of the proposed Level 4 and Level 5 traffic calming measures related to the Sherwin-Williams project on Horton 45th and 53rd Streets. And finally, I just would like to take this opportunity to express staff's appreciation to Commissioner Young for his years of service on the planning commission, and to say that he will be missed. That concludes my report, I'd be happy to respond to any questions. Thank you, Director Bryant. Are there any questions from the commission to Director Bryant on the report? Commissioner Chafe?
Just one question about the REACH code. So did you say that was for residential only?
Yes, the REACH codes have been being considered by the Sustainable Sustainability Committee, and then their recommendations are being passed along to the council, and they have divided it up into a number of different items. So there's, there's kind of a package of things that constitute the REACH codes. This particular ordinance to require 100% electric on all residential buildings is part of, part of the package of proposals, but it's only one of them, it's not all of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So Charlie, on that REACH code, is, are they considering the, um, the fact that we're getting so many requests for lab buildings, and the amount of energy they use, and basically the need for natural gas in those buildings, or has there been any discussion on that? I believe there has, and that, that's a separate ordinance that would be coming forward in the future. I don't believe that one has been finalized yet, and I, I believe that the concerns of the lab building owners and operators and tenants have, are being taken into consideration. Good, okay, very good, thank you. If there's no more questions, we'll move on to item 7. And that will be the disclosure of expedited communication and identification of conflicts of interest. So have there been any expedited communications? Commissioner Mendez?
I did receive an email from the developer and the Longfellow. However, I did not engage in a meeting with him because I also have a conflict of interest, which is, should I state my conflict of interest now?
Well, since it's the very next item on the agenda, I think it probably would be all right. What do you think, Christine? I'd be okay with that? Christine, you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, Longfellow developers, they are clients of my employer, therefore they're a source of income to me, and I will have to be recusing myself from item 8.1.
Thank you. And Christine, can I also ask if we received an email and invitation to discuss, even with the developer, but we did not meet with them? Is there necessary, is it necessary to disclose an expedited communication if we didn't actually meet with them?
If you didn't communicate, it's, it's not necessary to disclose, although, you know, a lot of public officials like to indicate that they did receive a communication. And, uh, so I believe that's what, you know, Commissioner Mendez has done here, but if, if you did not do any communicating on your end, then no, technically you do not have to disclose any communication.
Okay, I think, I think it's good just to be clear, so I did get an email from the developer, I emailed them back that I didn't have any to meet with them, so I haven't had any other communication with them. Mr. Chafe?
Same situation for me, I received an email from the developer, and I let them know I was not available to meet before the meeting today.
Did you send an email as well?
I received an email, and I did not reply.
Okay, very good, I think that's everybody.
I believe Commissioner Young had something?
He said he did.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, I, okay, I just, pretty much, I received an email from him as well, and I didn't respond either.
All right, very good. So any, um, any other conflicts of interest for anyone? All righty then, so we can move on to the study session, item 8.1, the Adrian Longfellow McShusse. And Charlie, my clerk, that Maru will be doing a presentation, or kicking us off? Uh, yes, first, I would like to say, I guess Commissioner Mendez will, Vice Chair Mendez will need to leave the meeting at this point. If you like, Vice Chair Mendez, I can text you when this item is over, so you can return for the commissioner comments at the end.
Yep, that's fine.
All right, I will do that. Thank you. Okay, Maru, I think the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Keller, and good evening, planning commission. I will be sharing my spree here in a minute. And... Now you're going to see my screen.
Yes.
Okay. So this is a study session on a proposed planned unit development, preliminary development plan at 165065th Street. Just to get you located, it is in the north, north end of a town, west side of Railway Road, Railroad, and east of I-80. The site is a amalgamation of two sites, one is what we call the atrium site, and the other are two parcels which are occupied by SAE Expressions College. Just to the north of the site, we have the NADI, what is called the NADI project, which is currently under construction. And to the south, there is Bridgewater, Bridgewater Apartments here, and you have Bay Center of Office Buildings, all right, to the south. The parcel, collected parcel is about 7.268 acres. This table kind of shows you individual parcels occupied by the Expressions College, which together are about under two acres, and the atrium building parcel is about five acres. So this is the proposed site plan. Just to get you oriented, on your right side is Shellmount Street, at the bottom of your screen is 65th Street. And at the corner here is the public storage building, which is not part of the project site. So what they are proposing are two, three towers, two are lab office buildings, one is these two, and they are both on a parking podium, and then there is a residential building also on a parking podium of, fronting 65th Street. In addition, there is a, about a one-acre parcel, a one-acre public park that you can see right here. So this kind of gives you a little bit more details in terms of how big these buildings are, and how tall these buildings are. So the office lab building to the north is 203 feet, and the office building to the south is 223 feet, and they together accommodate around roughly under 750,000 square feet of lab space. The residential tower accommodates 144 units and is 185 feet. This is the circulation plan that they're proposing. So you can see that the primary entrance of the residential building is off 65th Street, as well as the entrance of the R&amp;D building south also occurs here. The building to the north gets its primary entrance facing Shellmount Street. The blue lines indicate vehicular circulation and, and where the parking, the parking garage will be accessed. The applicant is also proposing some unspecified amount of ground floor retail space in the residential building as well. This kind of gives you the perspective from the northwest of the three buildings. As you can see, the residential building is over two levels of parking, whereas the two lab buildings are over five levels of parking. And this is the elevation, uh, perspective looking to the southeast. Your packet has a number of other massing studies, and these are going to be shown by the applicant in their presentations, so in order to save time, I will not walk you through those massing studies. In terms of the open space that they are providing, like I mentioned, there is a public park, which is a little over an acre, as well as a bicycle pedestrian path along the western perimeter of the site, and that is about 26,000 square feet. In addition, the residential building has open space on its rooftop, a little under 3,000 square feet, and they also have about 8,000 square feet of open space on the podium of the residential building. For the employees, the, the major open space is provided on the podium, and that's about 52,000 square feet. So in terms of conformity to the general plan, the general plan land use diagram classifies the site as a mixed use with residential, where one or more of a variety of residential and non-residential uses are allowed, including offices, retail, and hotels, as well as research and development. On larger sites, a mix of residential and non-residential uses is required, and larger site would include this site. The project is consistent by proposing office R&amp;D as well as residential use. In addition, the general plan land use diagram also designates this location as an other park opportunity site, and this is implemented through the Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, which calls for one-half public acre, public park at this location. What they are proposing is 1.18 acre public park, as well as a bicycle and pedestrian path along the western perimeter, which is, calculates to about a little over half an acre. In terms of the planning regulations, the base zone is MUR, mixed use with residential, which also allows a variety of uses, such as office R&amp;D, as well as multifamily residential uses. On the sites of five acres or more, the MUR district requires a mix of uses, one of which must be residential. The exact mix is not specified in our regulations, and is to be determined by the planning commission and the city council through the entitlement process. What they are proposing is an office and R&amp;D building, which as, as I mentioned, is a little under 750,000 square feet, and 144 residential units as major uses. In terms of the planned unit development process, on site greater than five acres, such as this one, any development proposal must be approved through a PUD procedure. And this is a two-step process, consisting of a review of preliminary development plan, followed by one or more final development plans. As some of you have, might have known, that in the Sherwin-Williams, that was also a PUD, PDB process, and they processed the new, four new buildings under one FDB, whereas in the marketplace PUD, there were several FDBs for each individual building. So this really depends on the developer in terms of how they want to submit for their final development plans after their PUD and the PDB plan is approved. There are specific findings that to be made for the PDB approval, as well as for the FDB approval, and these findings have been outlined in the staff report. And I'm not going to go through these PUD findings, but just simply say that what you, the findings speak to consistency with the general plan, that the development proposal is a cohesive, integrated, well-developed, well-planned development, that it is compatible with the neighborhood, that includes adequate open space, parking, pedestrian walks, signs, and landscaping. Regarding conformity with the planning regulations, residential density, so this, what is allowed is 70 units per acre by right, which can be increased to 135 units per acre with bonus points. So this calculates for the site as 509 units as base, and up to 981 units with a bonus. What they are proposing is 144 units, which calculates to 20 units per acre, so it is well within the base, the allowed base residential density. FAR 3.0 is allowed by right, which can be increased to six with a bonus. What they are proposing is 3.044, which is rounded to three, and so the FAR is also within the base FAR that is permitted. Height, what is allowed by base is 75 feet, and it can be increased to over 100 feet, which basically means unlimited height, is allowed by, with bonus points. All three buildings are above 100 feet, just to recall, 185 feet for the residential tower, 203 and 223 feet for the two resident, uh, non-residential buildings. So the project will require 100 bonus points for height. So in terms of bonus points, 50 points, the applicant will obtain, are required to obtain the 50 points by providing 17% of the units to be affordable. So this calculates to 24 units. The regulations also further specify at what levels of affordability that they are required to provide, and these are six units at very low, eight at low, and 10 at moderate income. In addition, because they are also proposing a non-residential development, the applicant will be increased, and in this case, double the affordable housing impact fee for non-residential component of the project. The current fee for R&amp;D is a little under $5, so what would apply here is a little under $10. So that equates to roughly $7.2 million if a building permit was issued today. So basically, these fees are due at the building permit, and at that time, whatever our, our, our fees are, that would be what would be relevant, but, but at today's, at today's dollars, if they were to apply for a building permit, they would need to pay $7.2 million as affordable housing impact fee for the non-residential component. The remaining 50 points, the applicant needs to obtain by providing community benefits. These have not yet been identified by the applicant at this time. Parking, in, for commercial parking, what is permitted is no parking, which can be increased to 1,602 spaces. They are proposing 1497 spaces for their commercial components, so it is within what is permitted by our co- So it is within what is permitted by our code. For the residential parking, what is permitted is 0 to 190 spaces, which includes guest parking as well. And what they are proposing is 144 spaces, which is basically one space for each unit. No residential guest parking has been assigned at this time. There is also bicycle parking involved. What will be required for commercial is 146 long-term and 146 short-term. And for the residential, they need to provide 144 long-term and 14 short-term bicycle spaces. These have not yet been identified in the proposal. In terms of open space requirements, for the commercial uses, what they are required to provide is a little under 38,000 square feet, which includes a minimum of a little under 7,500 square feet of purpose. What they are proposing is a little over 52,000 square feet of common open space. And at this time, it is not clear whether any portion will be designated as purpose. For the residential component, they are required to provide a little under 6,000 square feet of private open space and a little under 3,000 square feet of common open space. They are proposing 11,000 square feet of common open space on the parking podium. The private open space has not yet been identified at this stage. The proposal was reviewed by staff at the June 9th DCC meeting. Some of the suggestions include a consolidation of driveways along Shellmount Street. Right now, they're proposing two driveways along Shellmount Street. It was suggested that no loading information is provided at this stage, and this will be necessary as the project moves forward. There was also a suggestion of switching the location of the park with the residential tower so that the tower could take advantage of the views while providing some protection from wind and noise for the park users. It was noted that while a facing plan had not yet been submitted, it was suggested that the residential building should be constructed before the commercial buildings. Given the large monetary outlay that would be triggered by this development for public art, it was suggested that the applicant start thinking about it at this very early stage of the proposal. So in terms of the discussion items and in terms of the feedback that the staff and the applicant would like to receive, one is regarding mix of uses. Does the commission feel that the proposed mix of uses is appropriate for this site? As I mentioned, that you are, this site requires a mix of uses, of which one needs to be residential, and others could be a variety of office, life science, R and D, retail, hotel uses. So the question for the commission is that whether the proposed mix is appropriate for the site. Site planning, does the commission think that the location of the public park and the three towers and the proposed circulation is appropriate for the site? It is still very early, but if the commission has any preferences in terms of how bonus points for community benefits should be obtained, the applicant and staff would be, would like to hear that. And if the commission has any other comments on the overall project design. And findings, does the commission feel that the required findings for the PUD can be made? And I can put that up if necessary, as when the commission decides to collaborate. So that concludes my presentation. And as I mentioned, the applicant does have a presentation. And staff request that the Planning Commission provide comment on the issues noted above. And I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Very good. Thank you, Maru. Appreciate it. Does the commission have any questions regarding the project to staff? Commissioner Chief. Commissioner Chief has her hand up. Let's let her go first.
Thank you. A quick question on the open space. Maru, could you go back to the slide that talks about open space designations?
Sorry. Can you still see this?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yeah. So I just wanted to check, so this, so for commercial uses, it's required to have 37,000 square feet, of which 7,000 are proposed. And right now, so my question was, the 52,360 square feet of common open space, that does not include the proposed park, correct?
Correct, correct. So the proposed park is the public park.
Okay, great. And so right now, most of this common open space is on top of the parking podiums?
All of it is on top of the parking podium.
And is that the same, I can look back and check this, but if you know offhand, is that the same for the 11,150 square feet of common open space for residential use? Is that also all on the podium?
That is correct. That is also on, I'm sorry, that is on the podium as well. There is a smaller roof deck as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Maru, just to be clear, the common open space on the podium for the residential is different than the common open space on the podium for the commercials, is that correct?
Yes, so they're separate podiums.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Simon, do you have a question?
No, I don't. I'm good. Thank you. Mr. Keller.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, and at this time, we'll bring up the developer for present their presentation.
All right, if you'll bear with me for a moment, I have five people to elevate to the panelist level. Just have to do that for each of them. Let's see.
No stress, Charlie. This is the only thing we have on the agenda tonight. You're not going to keep us too late.
I hope not. Okay, two to go. Let's see, where are they? I have to, whoever sent me an email that has them all listed, and that's hard for me to.
Peter Fritz, Peter Fritz.
All right, thank you. And who's missing? My email keeps disappearing. Where is it?
I think that's it, Charlie.
I have one other. Brian Jantik, did I get you?
Yes, he's there.
Rob Williamson, Liz Bridges, Peter Fritz, and Evan Schwimmer.
Thank you all here. My, Charlie, could you, it's only elevated me for audio. That's okay. You don't need to see me if you'd like to.
Well, I'm not sure. Wait a minute. I'm not sure why that would be the case. Actually, it doesn't show you on the panel, so hang on a minute. Let me see if I can fix that.
I'm sure the commissioners are more interested in our content than what I look like, but no, no problem.
Oh, there you are. There you are. Thank you. Sorry. Okay. You are way at the top, so you're hiding. You should be able to be seen now. There you go. Thank you. All right, we're all set up.
Gentlemen, take away at your leisure. Ladies and gentlemen.
You can, whoever's presenting can, yeah, you go. Share your screen.
All right. So we can get started here while this is going full screen. But first off, I'd like to thank Maru for an excellent presentation. And also, I wish the commissioners a good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. We're here to present our concept for what could be at 1650 65th Street and adjoining parcels. Just to kick things off with some introductions. My name is Evan Schwimmer, Managing Director for Longfellow Real Estate Partners, with oversight of our presence in the Bay Area. And I'd like to introduce my colleague, Peter Fritz, who oversees our design, construction, and development team on the West Coast. Also pictured here, but not on the panel with us tonight unfortunately, is Jennifer Kane, my colleague here, who oversees our asset management resources in the Bay Area, who I'm pleased to say has been a contributing member of the Emeryville community for some time. I'd also like to introduce the leaders of our design team at HOK, including Brian Yenchuk, Senior Principal and Global Director of Planning, as well as Rob Williamson, Principal and Regional Leader of HOK's Science and Technology Practice. Before we get into the rest of our presentation here, just to do a quick agenda, if we can just back up one slide. Peter and I will give you a little bit of background about Longfellow, which I think you just got a preview of a moment ago, and who we are. HOK will walk you through our proposal. And then we look forward to the Q and A and discussion following our presentation. We've put a lot of time and thought into this, but we deliberately left a certain few items open for input from this commission and community and look forward to taking in with those, into those with you all today. So moving on to the next slide here, thank you. Our Longfellow, Longfellow's mission here is to create spaces for new ideas at the end of the day. And we do that within the context of existing spaces, as well as from the context of ground-up developments. Longfellow is the largest privately-owned life science owner and operator in the US. And we are, as you can see here, we are in the top five life sciences and innovation markets across the United States with a robust team and portfolio that really enables us to think creatively, expansively, and for the long term. If we move to the next slide. Within the Bay Area, we have presence in five of the top life sciences and innovation communities in the region, including Alalta, Redwood City, San Mateo, San Francisco, and most recently, in Emeryville. We've been trying to break into Emeryville for some time. And we're pleased to have finally established a presence that we hope to grow over the long term, regardless of the outcome of this particular proposal. Our existing portfolio of roughly 2.4 million square feet is something that we hope to grow and really establish ourselves in the Emeryville community. Next slide. Longfellow is a vertically-integrated developer and operator of life sciences facilities, working in collaboration with cities, communities, and public and private institutions. We have the in-house resources and expertise to deliver this project and others across our portfolio from start to finish. And we have extensive experience working with communities to deliver projects that are well-suited to the local market and to the local context in which they're delivered. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter Fritz, who will walk you through an illustration of what we do, followed by a handoff to HOK. Peter, over to you.
Thank you, Evan. And as others intro, my name is Peter Fritz. I'm the Director of Development for Longfellow on the West Coast. And we wanted to quickly showcase one particular project of ours that's in Durham, North Carolina. And that is the Durham ID, or Durham Innovation District. It's located in an urban core, which has very strong industrial roots. And the mix of uses promote the dynamic live-work-play environment, weaving together the historical context of the neighborhood with innovative research and development, along with residential, retail, and public spaces. And the reason we quickly show you this tonight is because we see a lot of parallels with this very successful project with our properties here in Emeryville. And we're really excited to bring our lessons and our experiences from that project to our project here tonight. If you get into specifics of this project, I will hand it over to Brian with HOK.
Hey, thank you, Peter. Thank you, commissioners. We'd like to take you on a quick walk through the project. Rob Williamson will join me here in a moment to talk, share with you more about the buildings themselves. As a planner, I'm going to start at the broadest scale. You know, Charlie, Maru, the entire team has been incredibly informative, helping us really make sure that our project is rooted within this community. We spent a lot of time, of course, digesting the general plan, the Western Emeryville planning, really focused on how do we make sure that our project reinforces the goal of a really cohesive set of uses? We took a lot of time to think about compatibility. Having a mix of uses, like the Durham ID example that Peter just referenced, you know, this is, Longfellow is a great partner for the city. They know what it takes to deliver these kinds of mixed uses. And then what's also interesting for the commissioners, and I think fascinating for all of us, is when you look at this project and the scale, we're a gateway project. We're the bookend on the waterfront to the northwest corner. We know the importance of that. That's very clearly stated in the city's documents. And there's also the potential future bridge in connection to the Bay Trail that allows us to connect our community up and down our entire bayfront. So those are the little green areas there. We think that open space is going to play a really critical role in our project. And you know, as Commissioners Chafe and Keller have already asked about, open space comes in many different forms on our project, and I'll walk you through that. So cohesion is really important. Next is connectivity. You know, we are blessed here in Emeryville, and certainly, you know, at our site, we've got connections to, you know, in pink, we've got AC Transit stops. We've, of course, got the Emerygo round that connects us to Bard, Amtrak. I don't need to tell you that Emeryville is invested in transportation, as well as bike and ped lanes. And so our project can benefit from that. But more than just benefit, how do we reinforce? You'll see the positioning of our buildings and open space are really purposefully and intentionally set to ensure that as people are waiting to get on AC Transit or Emerygo round, they're sitting in a park, in a shade structure, sheltered from the wind, under a tree. We'll walk you more through that, but we're going to definitely embrace the diversity of transportation modes and reinforce them wherever we can. We spent a lot of time walking around the site. It's incredible property. I don't need to tell you about the views. We've actually, you know, taken some photography at higher altitudes to really showcase that for the commissioners here later. We've got some existing trees along the streetscape. We want to make sure we take advantage of every opportunity. We also are very mindful that we have residents that are to our south and southeast. And we spend a lot of time thinking about how to be good neighbors, how to provide compatibility. And we'll provide more visuals to help everyone understand exactly what we mean by that and how we'll achieve it. As we now zoom into the site, we've kind of ghosted out the site just to kind of go one layer at a time. We start with the connections of the streets. We are incredibly blessed to be on 65th, which of course is our transit street. It's our green street. We're at the turnpike for the bookend of Christie Avenue, just barely shown at the bottom of the plan there that connects us down to Powell and further. And then, of course, along Shellmount, where we have our bike connections and pedestrian connections, as well as access up to the Ashby interchange. These connections really tell us a lot about where our driveway should be, where our front doors should be, and how we can reinforce the city's green streets program and the ped pipe route. Ped bike routes. It's a tongue twister. The next goal, which we're going to linger on just for a moment here, is how do we enhance the open space and the network throughout Emeryville? We think that our project as a gateway project is really going to critically, it's going to be critically important to the open space strategy for Emeryville and certainly for our project. I want to walk the commissioners through a couple of statistics. I think that, Maru already covered a lot of this, but the public park, you can see in the kind of lightest green color there at the corner. We chose this position because this ensures that it will be in the sun throughout the entire day. It's important to be sheltered from the wind, which the Ashby ramp in the soil there, it's actually higher than our site, provides us wind shelter. This also ensures that we're in the sun. I don't know about you, but in the afternoons in Emeryville, the best chance of being warm is to be sheltered from the wind and in full sun. So this is how we achieve that with a public park. We also think that open space in that position is a stepping stone. It's a gateway to the future pedestrian bridge. You can kind of see in yellow there, up and over, and eventually to the Bay Trail. I mean, imagine, it's like this sort of landing mat for everyone going to and from the waterfront. We think that's, projects like ours can really help reinforce these city goals. The greenway along the Ashby exit, of course, is part of the city's bigger vision to connect sites like ours with a bike, shared-use path all the way up there to the north to Ashby. We're definitely delivering on that, so too did the project to our north. And then I'd like to walk through the numbers a little bit, because the open space plays a really critical role, not just for our community and for our project, but also for the bonus. And so the public park that you're seeing there, there's 51,400 square feet. So it's a little over an acre and a quarter. That is nearly 30,000 square feet beyond the requirement. I think, as the commissioners know, the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan called for a half-acre park at this location. It's commonly referred to as Site B. We'll work on the naming. So we're far exceeding that. And this really is the foundation for our community benefits. This is how we're achieving those bonus points associated with community benefits. The public open space in total, we, our requirement is about 15% of our site area, and we're at about 25% of our site area. So I don't mean to rattle off so many statistics. We can go through it more during Q and A. But long story short, our public park and our public open space requirements far exceed the city's goals. And it's going to really benefit the project and the community as well. On the next slide, these open spaces really anchor then our entrances to the project. Of course, you know, Christie Avenue, you can, the commissioners can see that driveway connection. The public park there then to the southwest corner in the sun allows you to get that gateway moment up and over the interstate. So it's that threshold. This also positions residential adjacent to it. But when you look down Christie, you're not just staring into. But when you look down Christie, you're not just staring into a building, you're actually looking into an open space. We think it's important that there's really an amazing experience at the end of Christie Avenue. This then places the residential onto a public park. We think that's really critical for mixed use. In our experience, we found that that's really important to ensure the residents have quality open space. And then the lab buildings, and my partner, Rob Williamson, will walk through here in a moment, and then take up the remainder of the site to the north. All right, over to you, Rob.
Thanks, Brian. Great intro. So just to walk you through some of the physical structures on the site and how we've assembled them here for the most optimal configuration. Really what we have in mind here is that live-work-play environment that's going to be critical to really activating this northwest corner of Emeryville. So I'll start with the residential tower. What we've identified here is two floors of podium parking. And that provides a parking space per residential unit, 144 units. Maru touched on the low-income units that will be provided as part of that project. The tower is a significant, in our minds, portion of the site at 25%. And to the north, we have the laboratory building that's going to anchor the commercial portion. So that's five stories of podium parking there. That provides us with enough parking to meet the market demand. And then above that, the high-rise laboratory buildings. And we've designed these using a configuration that we know is optimized for life science research. It's approximately 110-foot by 300-foot bar. And what we're showing here in this proposal is an eight-story building to the north with a nine-story building to the south that's above the podium level. These buildings will touch the ground, provide entrance and activation at that plaza level, and really connect them down to the public space at the lower portion, as well as to the podium space above. And then they have the use of the podium space with great views to the west and to the east. Also connecting the two bar buildings is a bridge connector, which also acts as a windscreen. So it gives us a little bit more utility at the east side of the podium to where, you know, if the late afternoon wind is blowing in from the west through the Golden Gate, we have an opportunity to create some nice outdoor space still for the occupants, despite the outdoor conditions. So as Brian referred to earlier, circulation we knew was a key driver for how the site was configured. We took into account the entrances off of Shellmount and Christie as they connect or cross over some of the bike and greenways. We did try to minimize the impact of those. One of the considerations here with the laboratory building, there's a certain level of service and loading that's required. And what we've done here is used the podium level to recess a service and loading yard within the podium to where we can get the trucks off of the street coming in off of Shellmount, get them turned around into the loading area so they're not queuing, they're not impacting any of the traffic flow, and it minimizes the crossover impact with the bike and greenway. We've also created this interior circulation path that allows vehicles to get around the site and come out to Christie Avenue, not enter off of Christie Avenue, just to minimize that impact again. Seeing that 65th with its new bikeway is really going to be a primary connector for that pedestrian and vehicle traffic, especially as they come over the new ped-bike bridge. We've provided a fire lane around the entire building for access. And that is part of why we need that northern service yard and entrance. So we do have two curb cuts coming off of Shellmount. We need to maintain that full perimeter access for that fire lane. And then at the park, you can see, what we do want to do is activate the street with some of these public amenities. So we're showing a little kiosk down in the park. There could be a mixed use, you know, a food vendor or some sort of a pop-up shop, as well as providing the opportunity for some ground-level retail or other mixed use at the ground level of the residential tower. We did a study just to make sure that we've got all of the truck turning radius figured out in order to get into that location that we've identified for the service yard. We know that's important. As you can see here, we've provided ample space for the truck to come in off the street without impacting and having to stop and turn around on Shellmount. We think that'll be a benefit. And this road will serve a dual purpose of also bringing pedestrians between Shellmount and Christie and connecting them through the site so they're not circumnavigating around the public storage building. Here we give you an overview of what the site looks like. You saw this in various slides, so thank you for sharing those. What we're providing here is really a massing concept. So these buildings are stacked, again, optimized for life science research. We have 16-foot floor-to-floor height on the laboratory building, which we know from experience is critical to achieving our mechanical infrastructure requirements. We have a 10-foot floor-to-floor at the residential building, which provides us enough height there to stay below the top of the lab building, which we know is a best practice in design. So we'll continue that. Now, what we're showing is also just a massing concept. We don't have any kind of a skin preconception. We want to work with the council here, with the commission, I mean, to determine that. And we are open to input and guidance. Looking here from the west side of the project, looking back towards southeast, you can see the prominent role that that park and that greenway play in connecting the site to the rest of the infrastructure. Now, another really critical part of this is we got to put it in the context of the city. So one of the design guidelines really identifies the need for an imageable and memorable city, which Emeryville is by no stretch of imagination. This site as a gateway site that Brian was referring to really offers the opportunity to create a development that anchors the other end of Emeryville to really bookend it. So you'll see here how this development would sit within the skyline quite nicely in our mind. And to compare it to some of the other buildings around, we did a height study here. You'll see our buildings on the left, the two laboratory buildings identified in green, and the residential tower identified in yellow. Now, those are compared with the Pacific Park Plaza, which is the next one in purple, significantly taller structure. We've identified the proposed public market parcel B, along with some of the buildings that are on Powell Street, to show you that in the context of Emeryville skyline, this is perfectly fitting with what is existing. I'll run you through a number of just concept perspectives as you travel north on I-80, traveling south on I-80, exiting at the Shellmount and Ashby exit, crossing the pedestrian and bike bridge, traveling along 65th, traveling east past the development with the residential tower on the right and the laboratory buildings on the left, and this massive open space for the public, along with that proposed kiosk, some sort of a jewel box really sitting within the site. Traveling north on Shellmount, and you start to see the future MADE development beyond. And then coming from the other direction off of the exit, here's the proposed MADE development in front of our laboratory buildings with the downtown Emeryville in the background.
So, Rob just-
Perfectly timed.
My poodle. So Rob just walked you around the project, which my dog seems to have gotten quite excited about. I wanted to bring us back around here and talk about materiality and craft just a little bit before we wrap up. So Emeryville has a rich history of, you know, dabble materiality. I mean, these are materials, masonry, brick, the industrial heritage. These are honest, natural materials, and we think that there's a lot here that we can work with and incorporate into our project to make sure that we're integrated with the neighborhood. We also think that, and we'd love to hear the Commissioners' thoughts on how we can incorporate public art into our project. Being a science and tech kind of a building, there's so many ways in which we can interpret and display and talk about the kinds of innovation, convergence, and ideation that's happening within these buildings for a mixed-use project. So we think public art materiality is a big part of our story. On the next slide. We also think, you know, we need to think about both the future and make sure that we're, you know, we're couched here in Emeryville's materiality and the rich history, you know, in the past. And we think that there's many ways to do that. You know, you see some examples here of actually blending heavier materials, masonry buildings, that Emeryville is so known for, with higher, you know, technology, lighter materials, high sustainability of all of that. And we think that there's ways in which we can blend those material families together. And it's not just about the buildings. The landscapes, the coastal landscapes are incredibly important. We think all those parklands that I went on and on about before, that's an opportunity to bring in endemic species, restore our coastline, and take what is today largely a lot of asphalt. It's a very kind of hard kind of a project, and really turn it into a green kind of a project. And then finally, one of the last general plan goals was really to focus on vibrancy. And so I kind of want to end on like a vibrant note. How do we make sure that these public open spaces are active throughout the day, night and day, throughout the week? How do we make sure that that little pavilion that you see within the park, the café, it's a great place for everyone to wait for AC Transit, Emerygo round? How can we roll the topography like the image there on the lower left so that we can shelter the parks from winds? How do we incorporate landscape and trees? And then the upper images simply remind us that on top of those podiums, we also have landscapes there too, for both the residents and the labs. And then finally, some cool drone photos. I think the Commissioners are probably curious about what the views might be from various heights. We've taken a lot of time to think about where to place the towers relative to one another, especially the residential to maximize views and also access to daylight. So first up, you're up, way up in the air, about 180 feet, near the top of the residential. You're seeing views in all directions, all the way over towards the Golden Gate. But the East Bay hills are amazing too. These are from the lab buildings, similarly from an upper floor. And you can see views in all directions. And again, for the Commissioners, we've staggered the buildings so the buildings see past each other, and they also slow the wind. And then finally, from the top of the podium of the lab, what's nice about being, you know, up a little bit, 50 feet, you actually get to see up and over Ashby, and you can see out to the water. So that podium landscape is going to be fantastic.
So to recap us and to reinforce the sentiment that Evan shared at the beginning is that Longfellow really is thrilled to be part of the Emeryville community. And we believe that this particular project is especially exciting because it's really a unique opportunity for several reasons. One, given the scale, it's a great opportunity to continue to reinforce Emeryville as a leading life science ecosystem. Second, we're able to accomplish some of the city's stated goals, which is quite exciting, such as the establishment of a gateway at the northern end of the city, as well as to create a public park, not just any park, but a really large park that's tied into the future overpass. And then most importantly, in our mind, is it allows us to create a unique live-work-play environment, and it's truly an engaging and innovative district that has something for everyone. The house residential, it's a place for innovation as well as public and guests. Two programmatic and high-level elements we wanted to highlight with the plan, and that's, the first is the corner parcel, the parcel of corners 65th and Shellmount, which is currently public storage. Ideally, that parcel would be part of our project. And we have engaged with the owner, and we will continue to engage with them and hopefully work through some creative opportunities to work together. But currently, it's not part of the project. That said, given the scale and the streetfront that we do have, we feel the project is able to accomplish all the goals that we've outlined here tonight. And second, it is residential. We really wanted to provide a meaningful amount of residential because there is a real need for housing and affordable housing at that in the Bay Area. And second, we wanted to create the critical mass that's necessary to have a truly live-work-play environment. You need activation in the morning, during the day, in weekends, evenings, and having the mix of uses, the park, residential, and retail kiosk. It really compensates that. And we're compensing that through the proposed 144 units. You know, echoing again what Evan and Brian and Rob shared, we're looking for feedback on the program, as well as feedback on the details of the buildings, what these buildings want to look like. We want to echo back to the historical context of the city, but also be forward-looking with the research and development that will be done here. So we look forward to your feedback. We want to thank staff for your assistance to get here tonight. We want to thank the commission in advance for your feedback and questions. And so with that, Charlie and Maru will hand it back to you.
I think we will hand it back to the chair to facilitate any Commissioner questions.
Very good. Thank you, guys. That was a really good and thorough presentation. I really appreciate your visuals. I think it's very helpful to see it in the context of the existing community. Are there any questions from the commission to the developer?
I see Commissioner Simon's hand.
Go ahead, Mr. Simon. Commissioner Simon.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. I have a question. Do you have a predicted number of employees who would work at this site?
Based off the square footage, and again, it depends on which tenant would ultimately occupy here and the type of clients they would have, but given the rules, the sum we typically see would be around 2,000 employees.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chang.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Really helpful. Could you address the issue of POPOs, the privately-owned public open space, and whether you've had any thinking about that so far?
Yeah, certainly. So, you know, we need to work with staff and the commission on recommendations, whether it's POPOs or what the mechanism is. But it's certainly intense that that public park, as well as the path going along the western edge of the site, is publicly accessible landing. So we're open to suggestions and the city's recommendation on how to formalize that.
Thank you. And then one other question. I actually really don't know the answer to this in general about Emeryville, but has there been an exploration of putting parking underground? I don't think I can think of any other examples in Emeryville where that's been done, so maybe it's just a no, but curious your thoughts on that.
We very quickly looked at it and very quickly came to the answer is there's a very high water table being on the bay, as well as some environmental factors from previous uses. So underground parking is not feasible.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? So I just have one. In the plan I saw, where you were having your delivery trucks illustrated and stuff, have you given any thought to garbage recycling, composting, handling on the site? Or is that still to be developed?
We have, and we would want to consolidate all service in the same general vicinity. So between loading, unloading, garbage and delivery, we would identify those as one particular use that we'd want to separate out from passenger vehicles and daily travel. And also, short-term loading and unloading, if we're talking about Ubers, drop-offs, UPS vehicles, FedEx, that would be a separate use. So there is an intentional split between those two.
And then there's also, you guys are looking at those services for the residential tower separate from the commercial?
That's correct.
Okay. And I just would ask that you look at trying to keep that in the building as much as possible. We have a lot of dumpsters that sit out on the street. The birds pick them up. One goes it away, and so it's really kind of a pet peeve of mine that the garbage containers sit out. And so I'd like you to look, as best you can, but we can get into that in the comments section. But that was my question to you, if you are looking at that.
You're after our own harvesting, Commissioner Keller.
All right, so if there are no more questions, what I'd like to do is open this to-
Excuse me, Commissioner Keller. I believe Commissioner Young has his hand up.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Commissioner Young, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much. Let me raise the downs. I wondered if there was any kind of reflection in terms of how you wanted to have that residential building next to the building, how close next to the lab, how close that might be, what's the distance that it follows? Are you thinking about, because about 25% of those units are really going to kind of face out in front of the lab, vice versa. Can you talk in those terms of how do you visualize that?
Yeah, I can address that. So the separation here is a minimum of 40 feet. It's actually more separation than you'd get with a downtown high-rise residential. So if you imagine yourself being in a downtown environment, you'd be in a residential tower. Your separation from the laboratory building, which could be a downtown use as well, is going to be greater on this site. And that was considered.
Thank you.
Commissioner Chafe has a question, I believe.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. One more question. So you made reference collectively many times about the presentation to the potential bridge over the bike head bridge over the freeway. What is your understanding of the timeline and probability of that actually being built? And how would any changes to the proposed design of that bridge influence your thinking about the site design?
I could take the design side of that. I might defer to the city in terms of timing. Maybe you have better intel than we do from Caltrans and others. So Commissioner Chafe, and thankfully, in each one of the scenarios that's being explored for the pedestrian bridge, they all kind of land back somewhere around 65th Street, where it meets the waterfront. And so thankfully, as long as, so long as we position open space there to receive that future bridge design, which is, I think, still being developed, we're going to do a good service, so that's helpful for us. As to the timing of that bridge, I'll maybe defer back to Charlie or Maru. Maybe you know better than we do.
I can address that briefly. I mean, I don't have a very precise answer to that. We'll say this has been, this has been a proposed project for many years. It is- It is moving fairly rapidly towards completion. The lead on this project is actually the Alameda County Transportation Commission, ACTC. And there was a city council study session on this project, I believe it was in June, Mayor June, where they went through it. And what was reported, and the Public Works Department are the ones who are really spearheading it on behalf of the city, so I'm not really on the inside track on this, but I believe what was reported then is that it is entering the environmental review stage now. So they're starting to prepare an environmental document, most likely that will be both a CEQA and an EPA document. I'm not sure what kind of document it is, probably an EIR, I don't know. So, you know, that will take a year or so. And it's all involved, of course, with the Caltrans process for getting projects approved and then constructed. So, you know, I would best guess, I'd say probably five to 10 years, but it is moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Last, I had heard it was not funded yet, so that was part of the reason for my question.
Oh, it's fun, well, that's not entirely true. It's funded through Measure BB, I believe, but not completely. Apparently, there is a big funding gap. So yes, there is additional funding that needs to be had. Concerning the design issue, I will say every iteration of this, or virtually every iteration of this project that I've ever seen, the interchange project, has had the pedestrian bicycle bridge landing at 65th, at the end of 65th Street. So I think it's a pretty good bet that that is most likely where the pet bike bridge will land.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. So we have no more questions. I will now open it up to public comment. Charlie, if you could read our comment script for us, I would appreciate that.
Certainly. Now is the time for the public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun submission of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the planning commission secretary to read your comments into the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine, and the secretary will call on you at the appropriate time. This time, I will ask myself whether any comments have been received via the online comment card and/or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments. So I will recheck my email, which is where the online speaker cards arrive. I do not have any online speaker cards in my email. I also do not see any raised hands among the attendees. We have 17 attendees tonight. Oh, there's a raised hand. Nikos Bountas, you will have three minutes. You may unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, I'm a resident from the Bridgewater site, and I would like to understand what design consideration has been given from this project in terms of the light shade that it will cause, given the height to the Bridgewater community, given this is really a four-story building.
I can...
Well, Chair Keller, do you wish to ask the applicant to respond to the public comment?
Does the applicant have a response? Have you prepared? If you have one, sure, go ahead and give us some information to add.
Great, I'll just, I'll just, sorry about that, Charlie. Yes, I'll just add, so as the, as, we've definitely taken a look at the solar studies, and by placing the residential building as far to the right on those plans you just saw are to the east, it helps us keep from shading the building as the sun swings pretty far to the north throughout the year. And so that, we've taken that into account to ensure that daylight continues to meet the residential buildings. Thankfully, our building is to your north, and so that helps us a lot to ensure that our building doesn't catch shade. So we just have to keep an eye on that far, far northern winter sun to ensure that sun still strikes onto your windows. So it's very important to us, and it's something that we're going to continue to study.
I would note also that presumably, whatever environmental document the city ends up preparing on this project for CEQA analysis will include a shadow study.
Yeah, I would ask that that be provided, even if CEQA doesn't require it. But most plans, we do see that, so I kind of think it's expected that. As it develops and becomes a project, I'm sure we'll see a shadow study. All righty, any other raised hands?
Well, Ms. Bountas has raised her hand again. She didn't use her full three minutes.
Sure. Go ahead.
All right.
You can unmute yourself again.
Thank you. Yeah, I have another question, which is pertaining to the traffic. There is a train station next to, well, there is a train station, and when the train passes, it's already actually causing a lot of traffic at the intersection of the 65th Street. So if we're adding 2,000 employees to these labs resource center, I guess we're just trying to understand what design consideration would be taken in terms of the additional traffic these workers may bring when they're leaving or going to work at the same schedule.
Chair Keller, I would suggest that if Ms. Bountas has any further questions, that she state them all now during her three minutes of time, and then they can be responded to afterwards.
That would be appropriate. Is this your final question?
Yeah, that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Charlie, do you want to take that, or?
Well, I mean, I'll just say that we will do a traffic analysis as part of the environmental review, and so we will study all of those issues.
Yeah, that's what I assumed. Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
I do not see any other raised hands among the attendees. Let me double-check my email again, see if any online speaker cards have been submitted. I do not see any online speaker cards. And I do not see any further raised hands among the attendees.
Okay, at this time, we will close the public comment period and bring it back to... Go ahead.
The city attorney has a raised hand, though.
I just wanted to clarify for the record. Charlie, can you confirm that this speaker submitted a written communication to the planning commission that was forwarded to them for their review prior to the meeting tonight?
Oh, was that this speaker?
I believe it was.
There was. Mira, do you know that?
No, it was a different name, and it wasn't Ms. Bountas. And I can just tell you the name right now.
P?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, but Pedro Yang was a letter that was emailed to us and which was forwarded to the commission.
And, but also, Ms. Bountas was CC'd on that email, so I'm assuming there's some connection there.
Thank you. Start.
Okay, so bringing it back to the commission for deliberation, why don't we start with Commissioner Young?
A great presentation, everyone, for my last commission-appointed remarks I'll make tonight. I thought the layout and plan was quite nice. I liked the fact that there was a pretty juxtaposition. I'd just like to keep in mind that in terms of how you site plan it, the, try to maximize the views for as many people as you can on the residential. I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of would be a neat way to kind of really take advantage of, we got, you got, it just seems like the residential building's a little bit tucked into the corner there, but if you can just juxtaposition, just write your massage in it out. I really like the fact that in terms of a lot of opportunity for public art on how you're going to sitescape the properties, I like the water features that are presented, and I think the fact that there's a lot of natural curves that could be placed and used there. And I think that leaves a lot of great opportunities for public art. I think the connectivity between the buildings make kind of a, kind of a play, interplay of kind of campus slash, almost like a community on its own. And the relationship between the lab buildings and the residential building could have a really neat opportunity. It's kind of an interesting mix. And in terms of the feel of how an urban core industrial tie-in, the, I think it'd be neat just to kind of carry off as much of the materials throughout the site, offer some differentiations, bring in something that might be a little bit out of the ordinary, a little bit special. Don't be afraid to be bold on it. Emeryville's a neat place, has a tendency to leave itself for the quirky and the unknown and the specialness of it. So don't be afraid to do that here. Other than that, I think it's a, I think it's a vibrant idea. I'm really excited to see a project like this use that site in a kind of a, kind of a neat, positive way. Kind of a rare opportunity for this location. Same thing with the bridge. And I guess in terms of that bridge coming across, I mean, a lot of people are going to be using it, so there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of excitement there, try to tie, find a place to tie the Marina site of Emeryville to basically the rest of Emeryville. And I think that's a very positive move. So thank you very much for your presentation. Fantastic. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks. If we have questions when you follow up, I'll come back to you. Charlie, do you want to demo the public speaker before we go on? And while we're doing that, Commissioner Chafe, would you like to share your comments?
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, thanks again for the great presentation. It's really exciting to see the plans for this part of Emeryville. And as someone who sits on the Parks and Rec Committee, the idea of having such a large new park is just thrilling because most of our committee meetings is spent...
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay.
Sorry.
Back to recording. Most of our committee meetings are spent trying to eke out any tiny bit of park space that we can find around the city. So the possibility of having such a large park that's so well-connected is amazing. I noted that there are some guidance passages about the type of amenities that are desired in the park, that are in the Parks and Rec strategic plan, and I think it would be great to reflect that in any future plans that go forward for the park. I've been thinking a lot about this idea from the staff presentation about switching the location of the park and the residential tower, and I do think that there could be some interesting benefits to that. So one is that the park right now is really close to the freeway, and people who are using the park don't have any possibility to reduce their exposure to air pollution, especially during traffic jams, which happen pretty much daily on that stretch. Whereas people who are inside their apartments do have the possibility. Now, obviously, people are, you know, going to be spending a lot of time in their apartments, so putting them closer to the traffic might be counterintuitive, but if they have the ability to be comfortable with windows closed and have air purification or HVAC and such, then, you know, it may actually make sense to have the apartments closer to the freeway and the park further away. I do also think that it would be really nice to have the park more visible from 65th and Shellmount because it's an intersection that gets a lot of traffic right now, like pedestrian and bike traffic, and it looks like it's built to be even more in that direction, like we're encouraging more bike and ped traffic there. And so having something that's a bit more visible from that intersection could be really inviting and serve the surrounding communities even more. I'm slightly concerned about the wind tunnel effects between the buildings. I assume that's something that you all have thought about and designed for, but I'd just be interested to hear more about that in future, future presentations, because especially with a lot of the open space being up a bit, you know, just from experience going on the new space that's up a bit near the train bridge, the pedestrian bridge over the train tracks, it can get really windy there, and that's just, I think it's on the third story officially. And so if you have things that are up even higher than that and really close to the bay, wouldn't want to exacerbate it at all with a wind tunnel effect. Let's see. Be very interested to see the pedestrian circulation plan in the future and the ideas for bike parking. I think in general, I, my main concern right now is about parking and about the idea that as you pass by this proposed development, that you'd be basically seeing, I think it's five levels of parking on two of the buildings. And that, first of all, doesn't feel right for a direction for Emeryville to go forward, just having that much parking built into all of the buildings. And secondly, it's just not, it's not a very inviting experience. So I think there would be some creative things to do around green walls or public art, but I think reducing the parking as much as possible would be a key priority for me. And so I'd be interested to hear any reflections that the development team has on potentials for reducing parking. One other question I have, actually, and I don't know if this has been addressed, is the idea of moving parking into a separate structure, and then somehow consolidating the buildings a little bit. I'm guessing it was a very thoughtful decision to put the parking where it is now, but I'd be interested to hear more about other alternatives that were considered. I'll stop there. Thanks.
You don't have to stop. We come back to you if you have any more questions. Okay, Commissioner Simons.
Good. Excellent. Thank you so much, Chair Keller. Thank you so much, city staff, and the developer for giving really, really complete presentations. I'm very excited to do something with this site. I love that it's right on the bay, and I love that it's one of the most, I think, well-developed, just exciting parts of Emeryville. So I guess I'll just run down the questions that we got from staff here. You know, I think obviously, so first question, clearly, this is the mix of use that are laid out in our requirements. I'm a little concerned about the jobs/housing imbalance, like Commissioner Chafe mentioned. It appears to be about 10 to 1 jobs to housing, and, you know, I'd much rather have everybody who's working in your nice biotech building get a chance to live in our city. I think it's a great place to live, and it's important to me that we make the city as accessible as possible, so continuing to throw that more out of whack, I'm not too happy about. But obviously, there's many other reasons why this is happening, and it's not only a problem here. I think around the site planning, I think balancing getting away from the bay with the light is a tricky decision. I go to the marina with my dog pretty much five nights a week, and it's exhausting to be out there in the wind. I think potentially switching the park location might make it much more actually usable and a place people would really want to be, and also, no, take you away from the noise. And I know that freeway noise is really exhausting and not very pleasant to be around. On the bonus points, I don't have any strong feelings about that. I'd love to hear from the commissioners. One concern is around the project design is the park next to this giant, next to this great wall. I'd love to see some really creative ideas about how we figure out how to make that happen and have it look nice. I know that's a challenge with so many stories of parking, which I guess I would prefer to get rid of, but we can't. I'd love to see some really creative art to make that happen. And I think those are all of my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Simons. I guess because Mr. Mendez isn't here, I'm the last person. So I'd just like to thank you and staff for the work you've done. As a first run of just massing and sizing and et cetera, I think you guys have really come up with one of the best projects. I'm into my third term as a planning commissioner. This is one of the best projects that has come to us at this phase. I am really surprised and elated to what you're showing us, and I think if you keep moving forward on this trajectory, you guys will have a very, very good project. I would like us to get a better pitch on all the open space, rooftops, podiums and et cetera, when you come back. I would like for you guys to provide us with the details of being in the quarters with the city design guidelines. That's often an aspect that gets nested in these conversations at this phase, so when you come back, you know, kind of clarify all of your materials, landscape, hardscape, sidewalk lits, kind of give us all the details. I know this is too early, but this is just, now that we've lost a commissioner who was very, very adamant on design guidelines, I'm trying to pick up that mantle from her. I, as I often do, I disagree with the DCC, and I'm going to approach that to disagree with a couple commissioners here. They don't have the luxury of the view that I have of this location. I'm actually sitting here looking at it from 300 feet right now. And the freeway is not as close to this proximity as... the freeway is not as close to this proximity as the freeway is to other areas of town because the freeway shoots by and the off-ramp from Ashby and Shellmount come into that. So, the freeway actually moves away from this parcel more so than it does from my property or even the Bay Center property. And it is a berm. There is a berm there. And so, I think with the planning that they have, they're going to drop that down. So, the wind should not be as a problem. The wind is always going to be a problem in Emeryville. Every time we do a walk, we walk in San Paolo, Indiana, we walk across railroad tracks, the wind increases exponentially. So, we're going to have to live with wind. The thing I like is I have opening windows in my apartment. I've used them often. So, I think people in a residential building should have the option of not having conditioned or filtered air, but have fresh outside air. And for more important needs, how this park connects to the greenway path. You get a bigger park with that park adjoining the greenway that goes around the building and wraps around between the Navy site and this. So, we get a bigger park along with this. I also think, as they said, by moving the tower where it is, it will have less impact on the apartments across the street because they're moving out of the shadow area. So, I think overall, all things considered, the way it's positioned works better for the city and I think for residents and occupants within the building. I was probably the most vocal opponent against the 65th Street Bridge when it was designed and put in this location. I think it's the wrong location. I think it needs to be closer to Denny's and not quite to Powell Street, but more where the towers are. And that's where the people are. I lost that battle. I had to accept that this is where the city has decided to put this bridge. And I think this project is going to help make that bridge more viable. We're going to have more residents in the area. It's going to be a destination with the park there. So, it makes that bridge a lot more palatable for me than it has been in the past years. So, I like that. I think your mix of uses is appropriate. I definitely agree with Commissioner Simons that we do have a jobs balance problem. But it is not this project's problem to solve. And I think a 16-story tower with 144 units goes a long way to bringing residential in there. I know that as a city, residential units cost more than they bring in than opposed to businesses. So, we have to look at its financial standpoint as well. So, I think this is a good balance. I'm actually impressed that you guys are seriously considering ground floor active space. Nowadays, people are looking for reasons to pull that out. So, if you can find something to do with that space, I'm really pleased that you're doing something with that. I think the kiosk in the park is definitely a keeper, even if you eventually take it out of the housing. But I hope you can keep that in there because it is a viable thing, but it's valuable thing. But its viability is oftentimes really hard. I would like, I like the parking, I don't know if you changed the parking access since the DCC, but what you showed us with the current accessibility, I like that, that we only have three points of access. These are pretty big spaces. So, I think that's kind of a minimum. You guys are under our maximum requirements. Those projects that we've had come to us always want to push that above. So, I respect and appreciate that you're staying under our maximum. If you can look to reduce that anymore, I know there's a balance between with the market. And I keep saying that we have to be the paradigm shift and force in the market to look differently. We are a transit-rich community, even though we don't have BART. But everything's BART is the end-all, be-all. But a lot of these people will come from farther away. They can use Amtrak. So, we have a lot of viable options. So, if you could just look at maybe throwing us a carrot and giving us a little less, that would be very appreciated. And on that same tone, I would like to see a very creative and substantial transit development management plan from you guys, looking to encourage your residents and your employees at the building to use. So, please give us a very robust TDM. And I think for now, I believe that's all I have. I just think it's a really good thing. I like the massing, I like this shape of the structures. I don't think you guys need to change anything. Just show us how you want to finish it off. And I really appreciate Commissioner Young's remark. You can take a nod and one of the buildings to our industrial past. But I think maybe push the envelope, give us something a little more interest. Like you guys said, this is a gateway project. It's going to be visible from the freeway. So, a lot of people pass by there. So, you know, I wouldn't go iconic or crazy, but maybe something really like, well, I don't see that anywhere else. Could be a lot of fun. But we know we're going to come back and see another study session. So, there'll be many opportunities for us to add our input. But I think you guys have done a very, very good job. And I think for Longfels to bring in a company like HOK to do this, I mean, that's really top-notch firm to do this. So, we're really going to get a stellar billing out of this. So, thank you very much. And I'd like to ask the commissioners if they have any further questions or comments at this time. Okay, staff, should we bring up the list of five things to see if we've already addressed those for you? Or do you feel that we answered those?
Miro, can you bring the questions up, please?
I think she's working on it.
Right.
I can find it. I know I get passionate about the buildings and what they look like. It's a good one. So, I'll start off. I think the mixed use, we addressed that. I think that's fine. The site planning, we had some indifference of opinion. You guys can maybe figure out. But I think you made a case for where the park is. I agree with it. I think the way you've broken up the two office towers or commercial towers, I think is going to help with the wind tunnel effect. I think there'll be a lot of deflection because of the shape of that. Bonus points we'll need to get into, I don't have a preference. But I think giving money for underground utilities is always important to me. But we may be able to give you the bonus points for the increased park. But come back and we can talk about that a little more. Again, I think the design overall project is wonderful. And I definitely think we can make all the findings for PUD competing. So, Commissioner Simons.
Okay, yeah. So, I think I expressed this in my comments initially. So, I am good. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Chafe.
Yeah, I don't think I have any further comments. I agree with what you said, Commissioner Keller or Chair Keller. Just trying to see if there's anything else I want to add. No, I think just the one last thing on the park is that Christie Park has become a real favorite. And it's become a really iconic park for Emeryville. Like, people know the Whale Park. And so, that's something that I would just urge you to keep in mind. If there's some sort of real unique draw that you can bring into the design of the park, I think that will help put it on the map in a good way, especially with the connectivity to the bridge. I'm good.
I love that idea. I think that's a very good idea. I definitely agree with that. Commissioner Young.
I like the project a lot. I think a couple places on bonus points would be on the opposite side of where that bridge that you guys are taking the people to, basically residents or the public out to the other side. Maybe something to be a node there, something really special that might be characteristic of something exciting that when you cross the bridge to the other side, it's kind of neat. Maybe a platform on the bridge itself, that the platform might be a place where possibly public art could be on. But if not public art, maybe some kind of special viewing thing. And yes, the freeway is the freeway. We're stuck with it. And it's loud and it's obnoxious. But you know, we got, there's people who love trains. There's people who love cars. And maybe there's some of that. And then, I wanted to kind of like touch a little bit on how to think about the retail areas as well. I think it's brilliant to have a node out in the middle of an area that acts as a retail spot. It gives an opportunity for someone to have a really serious opening there. I think also the long stretch of parking that would be, I guess perpendicular to what would have been considered as the current proposal for the parking area. I think that's kind of neat, too. And I think there's, with that street coming around, the new roadway that's coming around that corner, making it kind of an opportunity for someone to actually have some, possibly store, possibly something, make a couple shops or something. That would be an opportunity. That'd be really neat. And I think, too, that the overall design idea is really neat. HOK's been around since I was a kid. I've watched that company do things at projects around the world. And I think I hand it to you guys to really continue to be a model. Be brave. Don't necessarily hold back. I think Commissioner Keller, I think there's a lot of things that I can identify with him in a lot of ways. And one of them is the fact that we live in an exciting place. This is a neat place. So, don't be afraid to make this gateway be a gateway. If that's what you're doing, go for it. Don't let it hold back. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. I think we've gone through everybody. Staff, is there anything else you need from us?
Commissioner Keller, if I may, I just would like to add a comment, which Commissioner Chafe made me think of. She mentioned Christie Park, which is part of the Marketplace PUD. And I would say that in most occasions where we have a large public park that is part of a development project, especially a PUD, we typically have a separate community process just around the design of the park. We did that for Christie Park. We did that for the Sherwin-Williams Park. So, I would imagine that in the future, as this project gets farther along, we will have some kind of a public process just around the design of this park. So, I just wanted to mention that.
That'd be awesome. I think that'd be a very good idea. How about the project team? Any clarifications you guys need?
Well, if anybody's interested in a dog, definitely no one who...
[laughing]
No, I don't think we have any questions. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, about that, I-
Just to say that we do appreciate all the input here and the dialogue. It is really helpful to hear from the commission. And thank you for your time tonight. Again, very much appreciated and looking forward to more of it.
Great. Well, the next study session, a little bit more details. Plant palette would also be helpful. We really don't have a landscape person on our midst anymore. So, we've got to kind of keep mindful of that as well. So, you have to follow the Bay Area, you know, Bay-friendly guidelines for plantings and stuff, I'm sure. But an example of the palettes and what you're envisioning for the next study session would be also helpful. So, otherwise, great job, staff. Great job, team. We look forward to having you back soon. On that note, I will close this item and move on to planning commissioner comments. If you'd like to bring back Commissioner Mendez. Charlie?
Thank you. I have sent her a text. So, she should be rejoining us shortly. But I would assume we could go on with other commissioner comments, please.
Oops. I'd like to give her minutes so she could be here to hear what she'd like and all of that. She kind of missed the welcome meeting, unfortunately. Seems like her company does a lot of business in town.
Oh, yeah. She's everywhere.
Yeah. It's kind of unfortunate. We missed a valuable input. I heard her happen to accuse herself.
You did say, "Okay, thanks."
She's on her way. She's connecting.
Oh, she is. Okay.
There she is. Welcome back.
Hello. Thank you.
So, we are on the part of planning commissioner comments. So, if we'd like to, Commissioner Young, do you want to kick it off or do you want to talk last?
Oh, wow. Well, you know, Zoe, you know, thank you for being, you know, COVID got in the way of us actually getting to really, you know, meet each other one-on-one. Erica, we really didn't get a chance to meet, you know. And I just love the way all of you think. Henry, you know, just a couple times, and I'm just there. And Miro, I run into once in a while. She works so hard. And it's thankless. And just, she works and works. But the presentations, and you guys, I mean, Emeryville's a neat place, just like I said at that last thing. We have, I'm going to get to return back to a normal life a little bit. I'm living three time zones. And I'm extremely exhausted all the time. And I think it affected me. But I tried to do as much as I could here. So, thank you guys for just bearing with me and everything that you guys have done. I can see already that you guys are, I mean, and hopefully the new team that shows up, you know, coming around the next time can carry a torch. And Stephen, I mean, you're going to lead a group. I mean, these are all fairly new people, Stephen. So, you know, they're all, you know, you're going to have to kind of rein them in. And I just, I really wish, you know, COVID got in the way of all of us. We couldn't really have a chance to, you know, really bond that well. But considering, if you see me around with long hair and a beard or whatever, just definitely wave at me. Say hi, okay?
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Chafe, any comments?
Commissioner Young, I'd just like to thank you for all of your amazing input and return your sentiments. But I'm really sorry we didn't get a chance to meet or serve in person. I know it's been wonderful to learn from your expertise and your experience on the committee. And I do hope that we cross paths in other ways, being involved with our community. So, thank you.
Commissioner Simons, any comments?
Sure. I have two comments. One, Commissioner Young, thank you so much for all your work with Emeryville. And I really enjoyed getting to serve on this commission with you. And in other exciting news, my fiance is having a baby a week from today. So, hopefully I can show him on the screen a month from now or whenever our next meeting is. So, yeah.
So, on one side, we have dog barking. On the other side, we have a new baby. So, there you go.
Baby on the way.
Thank God the baby didn't come early and you were able to move the meeting tonight and by next-
Tonight, you'll go, "Ah!"
Yeah, they'll already be here.
That's cool.
Very cool. Commissioner Mendez, any comments?
Well, first of all, congratulations, Commissioner Simons. Excited to see your new baby on the screen. And to Commissioner Young, I'd just like to echo the sentiments that the other commissioners have said. You will be missed. I really appreciate your positive attitude. That was one of the best things about you. You always came in with like very positive attitude and great comments that I always learned from. And I'm sure that we will run into each other around the city. I hope once the city starts opening up more, we can do more events and see each other there live. But you will be missed. Thank you.
You're real welcome. And yeah, and we can, all of us can now interact without worrying about the brown act or any of that stuff. So, yeah. All right.
Very good. Well, my turn, Tito. And now that we have some news from Commissioner Simons, congratulations and good luck with you. And that's going to be a major change in your life. And Tito, thank you so much. You've always been a ray of sunshine, something different, you know, always a different vantage point, a different opinion on things, things that, you know, we may not always look at. So, I appreciate that harsh perspective on things. And you are like the last remaining person on the commission that I actually knew and worked with in person.
Right.
I met Commissioner Chafe once at a distance of about 11 o'clock at night on the raising of the bridge.
Right, yeah.
But I have never worked in person with any of these people other than you. And so, it is going to be a new and different world out here. But you will be missed. But I know you are appreciated. And we're-
Thank you, guys.
I'm hoping you will get some rest. You know, I know you're working really hard and all over the place. So, maybe not having commission meetings will give you an opportunity to rest.
My next neat project is I'm working with UNESCO on the NASCAL lines in Pro-Gro.
Oh, fun.
So, I'm doing that, I'm doing that kind of layout. So, at least it's this time zone. So, it's one of the next things I'm up to. So, you guys, you know, let the developers know, just be brave, you know. Just let them, you know, I'm going to just, this is a neat place. We really, we all want to live here. Think about the residents. Think about the other people looking at the building and the other way around. So, think about those two. Just, and if you feel like it needs a balcony, you think it needs a roof garden, darn it, say it. Think you need popped-out windows and all this, and it just seems silly or it doesn't seem, you know, tell them. Just, you know. And Mr. Keller, one thing I want to say that I really liked of all the things that you've ever said was, if it's ever been built here, don't let them do another one. So, you know, be, you know, you said that. You said that last. I thought that was really, I thought that was really neat.
Well, thank you. I thought for sure you were going to say- I thought for sure you were gonna say something about my anti-septic.
That's experience.
Well, good. I thought you were gonna say something about my anti-septic.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, 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 no. It's, you know, material is material is material, you know. It's, but, but, but thank you, guys. And the last thing I want to say is, Mr. Bryant, Charlie Bryant, you're neat, man. Thank you very much for all that stuff that you do. And just a ton of work. Wow. I know how you guys, okay, so...